Good evening and welcome to the Merrimack School Board meeting this Monday, November 20th, 2017. If you could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Onto item number two, which is public participation. If you'd like to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and if you're a student, just state your first name and grade. Seeing none, we will close public participation and onto item number three, which is the opportunity for parental feedback on the school district's homework protocol. So if you'd like to speak tonight, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and then speak to any concerns that you have on the homework protocol. If there are any clarifiers regarding how the protocol is implemented, we will direct to Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Mark McLaughlin to provide any clarifying statements, and if you would like to get follow-up from the district, just please let us know, and we would be glad to reach out to talk to you about your individual student and how we may better help with this due protocol and getting them the supports they need. So with that, item number three is open.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Can we actually read the policy that we're actually discussing tonight first, please?
Absolutely. So, just to frame it out, so the homework protocol is a protocol, so that's a practice and an implementation of a policy. So a policy is designed to be a general practice, a general rule on how we conduct business. Protocols and the implementation of policies, as long as they fall within the policy structure, we do turn to our administration as those who would be able to deliver the education. We have trusted, educated, and prepared professionals to do that. So with that, I'll read the board policy, and then the protocols are what we sent out the first week of school, which I believe came out the second or third day, and that talks about how we use this, based on this framework of policy, how we are looking at homework implementation for the year. So here's Merrimack School Board Policy, which is IKB regarding homework. Homework is a constructive tool in the teaching/learning process when geared to the needs and abilities of students. Purposeful assignments not only enhance student achievement, but also develop self-discipline and associated good working habits. As an extension of the classroom, homework must be planned and organized, must be viewed as purposeful to the students, and should be evaluated and returned to students in a timely manner. Teachers may give homework to students to aid in the student's educational development. Homework should be an application or adaptation of a classroom experience and should not be assigned for disciplinary purposes. A teacher shall carefully explain to his or her students how homework assignments relate to the grading system. And this was adopted on June 2nd, 2008, and the legal reference is New Hampshire Code of Administrative Rules, Section ED 306 dot 14, Section B, Basic Instructional Standards. So on that note, the purpose of this agenda item tonight is to accept feedback from parents, and we welcome you to start at your convenience.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Rhonda Fleming.
Son? Yes, it is.
Okay.
We'll get a light on if you're not.
My name is Rhonda Fleming. I live at 15 Prater House Road here in Merrimack. I just want to say that I support the policy.
Protocol, if you wouldn't mind.
I'm sorry?
Policy or the protocol for homework?
I guess both.
Thank you.
I support not grading homework. I just want to be clear about that. It's not that I don't support homework, because my son still does his homework, even if he's not being graded on it, because it's a good learning opportunity for him, and I'm going to explain why I don't support it being graded, because the teachers weren't grading the homework, so to speak. They were often just coming by and checking to see if you did it, and giving you a checkmark whether you did it or not, and to me, that just goes back to the whole problem with today's society, that everybody gets a participation award. Whether he did it right or did it wrong, he was getting the same grade, and I don't think that's fair. So if it's not going to be graded and handed back with what's right and what's wrong, I totally support it not being graded at all, because there were many times where he got it back with the checkmark on it, and I looked it over, and I'm like, well, that was wrong. So if he's not learning from it, and he's not learning where his mistakes are, I see no advantage to him doing it. Questions?
This is an opportunity for us to take dialogue on how our parents are feeling about it, so we appreciate your feedback, and we're definitely looking to, again, take in the information from our constituency tonight.
Thanks.
So thank you very much, Mrs. Fleming. Okay. Take your time, and if you want to use that chair, just touch the button. So, we're here to make it easy on you. You're handling it with grace, so. Is the green light illuminated?
Green is now.
It is now, yep. Just bring it in a little closer, that'd be great. I think we should be good.
My name is Claudia Trethewey.
Nope. Could you use that one? This happened the other night. You don't want him crawling under there, because that's what's going to happen next. That's what happened the other night.
Okay. How's that? I think you can hear me now.
I'm getting a thumbs up, so thank you.
Okay. Claudia Trethewey from 27 Blossom Lane. I guess I'm a little confused about the change still.
Okay.
And I think what I'm finding is that there's inconsistencies, because the woman who just spoke before, my daughter is a ninth grade student, and actually, in algebra, Algebra I, she's been getting homework returned, and it's been put into the Power School with a grade, so her teacher has been reviewing it, correcting it. It's been put in there as a grade while it's not counting towards her overall grade, but at least she's getting it returned, and she knows whether she's on point, she knows where she's lacking, and me as a parent also then knows the same thing. We were at the teacher conferences just the other night, and now all of a sudden, we're told that he's no longer able to grade the homework, even though, again, knowing that it's not really counting, that all he can do is now put it in as an entry that it's been collected, missing, or late. He can't do that. So it's really confusing. I think there's just a lot of inconsistencies. I mean, I'm seeing on the Facebook, you know, community, town community, and I'm like, I can't make heads or tails of what's really accurate and what's not accurate, and even from the teachers, you get different versions. I think that nobody's truly clear on the thing, is what my observation is, and honestly, I don't think that there's enough parents that are either hearing it firsthand, that my suggestion would be, would the board entertain doing a meeting at the schools with a few people present that can actually clarify it, and maybe include the teachers and the principals, so everybody is on the same page and has the same understanding. That's really what I've noticed.
Okay. Mark, did you want to maybe respond to some of that? We're here, Mark's here for our clarifier, so he's here for you.
Okay, perfect.
So, relative to the way that homework is recorded in Power School, that's been known to us for a couple of, well, you know, you have to get a little experience factor. So after school started, what was happening is the Power School allows only a certain kind of entry, and so in order for teachers to be able to recognize that something was passed in, they were having to use like a numerical code, which they, in some cases, used like a zero. So it looked like the zero was a grade. This is in some cases, not in all cases, but in some cases, so it looked like it was a grade. The zero was a code for, you know, collected and reviewed, but not to count. What we were realizing is that that was confusing to people who see zero not as a code, but just as what it represents, no points.
Right.
And so what I think the teacher was talking about is, when it became known to us that that is, you know, what was happening with Power School, we just tried to develop new coding that would not be a numerical code of any kind that would suggest a grade, but would rather just be a code for which there is or will soon be published a key that just says, you know, this is homework that's been received, returned to the student, but there is no grade attached to it. So part of that, and again, there's like an experience factor that you have to have before you can fully realize some of the implications, but that was, that was, that was what that was. So I don't know if that applies in your particular student's case.
This was a letter grade. I mean, she got A's, it was a grade, it wasn't a zero or a code. It was definitely a grade, as if they were reviewed and corrected.
Yep. So in that case, what we've also done is make sure that teachers understand, this is a new practice, and so we wanted to make teachers understand early on what the expectation was. So in those cases, when it wasn't a code factor, but rather a literal misunderstanding of the application of the practice, then we've reminded teachers, remember, this is the semester that we're not doing that. So you're seeing modifications, you know, and I recognize.
Yeah.
Yep. It's not to say that it's, you know, good, but it's what happens, you know, as you begin to try to implement a new practice, and, you know, it's, you need to have a little experience factor to be able to say, oh, wait a minute, remember what we agreed, this isn't what we're doing, and then, so it is confusing. What I hope is that as we move into second semester, second quarter, some of those inconsistencies are going to start to get fleshed out as we have more of an experience factor and we continue to talk about it. It's slim comfort for people who are confused now, I understand.
Right.
But that's, those are just the experiences that we've had trying to continue to see what we're experiencing as it happens and then address it.
So Ms. Trethewey, just so I understand what you're saying, because I also have a ninth grade, which is why I kept running into each other apparently. So you're saying where your child's grade said it was an 86, but you had the asterisk next to it, would the asterisk meant was not counted toward quarterly grade, correct?
Exactly.
And now the 86 say, and it sounds like your kid's more of a 92.
Yeah, she definitely, she did well this semester, so I'm happy.
But that 92 with the asterisk was no, is no longer showing up as 92. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, it showed, okay, so her overall grade was 90-something, right? But then below, it just showed the quizzes and tests all had a grade, and then the homework had letter grades to them, but I think they may have been little notation, or I just knew that they weren't counting. So obviously, I just looked at the test and quiz and could see that the overall grade was 90-whatever it was.
Okay.
So, like I said, it was, it just showed it as a grade.
Okay.
You know, so it was good for me to see that she was on point, you know, but that was, it was the only class that I remember seeing the homework actually with a grade to it. Some subjects there, you know, Latin maybe isn't, it's done differently, right? So you can't.
The asterisk issue is definitely something that we've realized can be confusing to some folks, so that's, again, that's what we're trying to.
Trying to get to the bottom of it.
Trying to work out, right?
Okay. Yeah. So thank you.
So, Matt?
Yeah. I just want to reinforce what Mark said. In order for the, the teacher in that point, in that scenario that you brought up, is using the grade, the numeric grade, to keep track of whether or not it was passed in, because something has to be put there, as Mark said, a zero, a one, or whatever, and the system is making them do that to assure that it's been passed in, so the teacher can keep track. And when the little star there is, you can put on whatever subject, whatever test or quiz, does not count in GPA, does not count toward final grade, so that has to be what the checkmark or the star is.
Okay.
So they're using it as a tracking mechanism, and then the star means it's not counted in the final grade.
Okay.
That's a quirk of the system right now.
Okay. So, so to that note, and just for all of you actually, that we will be meeting again in January to go over the rollout and get the data behind it. So this isn't the end of the conversation, so that's the one thing I want to make sure is very clear. We'll show the student impact using first semester data in January, so I believe it's going, we're looking at the second meeting, but maybe the first meeting, but hopefully the second meeting, closer to the end of the first semester, so we can take a look at the data. So were there clarifying questions from the board for Andy?
Just a question. So when the homework's returned, even though it's not being graded or counted, is the homework being corrected when it's returned, or show what's right or wrong, so the student knows the success of the homework they've done?
I got the impression that it was. I've not seen it, but I'm getting the impression from my daughter that it is returned to her with it corrected.
Right, because the policy and the protocol implies the student does the homework, it's turned in, and then it's returned to them showing right or wrong. I mean, that's, and it's from a school board, that's what we believe the protocol is, it's just that the grade doesn't count towards the GPA, so.
Right. But I've heard other stories where maybe it's not getting returned with it, it's just, yes, they're walking through and saying, yes, you've done it, and that's it. So there is.
Inconsistency.
It's totally inconsistent.
Okay. And I actually have a hand up from the student, so if, so.
Going off what you said about them actually going through and correcting the homework, it really depends on what teachers, some of them like collect it, grade it, and then some of my teachers just grade in front of the class, then others just look at it. So it really depends on who you have as a teacher.
Right, exactly. And that's the unfortunate part. That's really, I think, what's not okay. I think it should be consistent, and maybe it, I don't know, I don't want to say anything offensive or whatever, but it just seems like maybe there should have been a little bit more pre-planning for the change, and making sure all the teachers really understood it before it was rolled out, whatever it may be.
Okay, go ahead.
So, the practice that Chris just pointed out, has, you know, this is typical of districts generally. I mean, there really is very wide latitude in the way that homework is generally considered. Merrimack isn't unique in that. It is always the case that in every district, there are some teachers who are very strict about homework, and how they handle homework, and how they review homework, and in other classes, sometimes even within the same team or same grade, there's a very different policy. So what this is attempted to do was to try to introduce some consistency in one of the most important aspects of it, which is whether this is going to count or not. To your point about the pre-planning, there was a lot of dialogue internally in the district, and clearly, there needs to be more. This is always the case in an implementation of any, of any size, you know, not an excuse, we can always do better, and I often say to the board, this is always our goal, is to continue to try to generate data and feedback, so that we know how to do better. But it's just, as a matter of fact, when something large is implemented, as many times as it's said until it's practiced, and then you can say, now, remember what our agreement is, and go back, and then, you know, sometimes habits die hard, and so you have to say, oh, remember what we're doing, and this is literally what we've done. So I take your point completely, and we continue to, you know, try to make sure that teachers understand what the expectation is and why, not just an edict, this is what we're doing, but, you know, why, and what, how it matters in the larger context of what we're trying to do.
The only one other thing is, I did see the meeting that was held the Monday after the open house night, and I was curious, because I did listen to your PowerPoint, and it talked about, you know, some kids don't test and quiz as well, and therefore, you know, special projects, what other things might be able to help offset, but in math, you know, sometimes, I think some teachers, the conversation was, what are they doing different in math for extra credit, if you will, if you want to call it that, to offset the tests and quizzes? And I'm not sure what they're, what they're able to do.
So, when you say extra credit, you probably mean, you probably.
I mean, a different, a different way to test, right? So instead of, you know, if the homework's not going to count, then, you know, if you're in English, you're taking a test, you've got a quiz, you've got a book report, you've got something else, science, you have labs, or whatever else you might have. But in math, what are they able to do, and what are they going to do differently than just the tests and the quizzes?
So, one of the, one of the good outcomes of this dialogue about homework has been that we've really been able to broaden the conversation about instructional practice, because really, that's not a homework question, that's an instructional practice question about, you know, what does it mean to differentiate? What does it mean to differentiate instruction? What does it mean to differentiate assessment? And particularly in a discipline like math, that has a long history of, you know, doing things a certain way, particularly as you get farther up in the grades, there's a lot of conversation that needs to happen. A lot of people are very convinced that, you know, if they've had success as a teacher in the past, that what's the reason to change, and so there's a lot of dialogue that needs to happen, and one of the things that this has brought about is a really, for the first time in some time, I think, a really good, healthy dialogue at the, throughout the district, and particularly at the high school, about what does good instructional practice mean? So when it, or assessment. There are lots of ways that students can demonstrate their understanding in ways beyond just a paper pencil quiz providing, you know, an answer, because what we're really talking about is understanding, and sometimes, a student getting, you know, answering a math question incorrectly, has actually evidenced a lot of understanding in the process behind it, just, you know, flipped a digit or something like that.
Right, exactly.
But if we just assume, you know, they're wrong because they got the answer wrong, it doesn't say anything about the processing and the thinking, which is really at the heart of what we're trying to do. So one of the things that Ron Delude and other folks at the high school are really doing is investigating those, those strategies and practices, which we would be doing even if we hadn't implemented this protocol, though it's just a good dialogue that we're, that we're having.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Trethewey.
Thank you.
That was my seventh grade English teacher's name, and she was one of my favorites, so And we're still accepting testimony for item number three? Well, Mr. Bevel.
I'm Robert Bevel. I live at 12 Blair Road with my wife, Jan, and we have six children, two of whom who've already graduated from the Merrimack school system, three are currently attending Merrimack High School, and I have one attending Reed's Ferry. I'd like to start off by saying thank you to the wonderful teachers that my two oldest daughters were able to experience growing up here in Merrimack. It started early with the reading programs at Reed's Ferry Elementary, Destination Imagination, the opportunity to paint a mural in the middle school, and then band, chop shop, the STEM programs, a lot of opportunities here. And we met many excellent teachers along the way, who helped contribute to my daughter's success, and there was a lot of homework along the way, but the payoff at the end was what was rewarding for that. Today, those two daughters have both completed their masters, with one pursuing a student counseling program in Vermont in a public elementary school, and my other daughter is pursuing her PhD in Germany under a Fulbright scholarship, that is, an all-expense-paid to Germany to study biomedical engineering. And none of this would have been possible without the contributions made by the unsung teachers here in the Merrimack School District. It is a compliment to what has worked here, and I wanted to say that first. The Homework Summit Committee met in January and in May, and they started with several issues with which they wished to address. I got the material from Dr. McLaughlin a couple of months ago, and we had pleasant discussions about that, which included no uniformity of grading practices across the grades, across the contents within the district. It also talked about you couldn't properly assess homework equitability from those who receive help at home to those who don't, and an academic integrity of the grade, what does the grade mean, what does the homework correlate to a greater understanding. And these were noble issues to address, but the end results didn't even come close to that. Instead, the administration decided that since they couldn't control who could help their children at home, that no one would get credit for their homework. So from the minutes of the May 15th meeting, it talked about that there would be a broader formal presentation, you said that there would be more forthcoming in January. I look forward to that. The end result was a protocol which is at odds with the published policy. I have a copy of the policy, this is 2008, and while it was highlighted differently in the copy that all of the parents received, I've highlighted two different spots on my copy. On the homework policy, which is the board's, it says, "Teachers may give homework to students to aid in the student's educational development. A teacher shall carefully explain to his students or her students how homework assignments relate to the grading system." To me, this promotes teacher autonomy on how they teach their class, what the rubrics are, and their teaching methodology. And then we have the new homework protocol, which is supposed to be an implementation, it is supposed to be a scaled-down version from a policy as to how that policy to be implemented, which talks about opportunities for practice, the consequence of non-compliance, not to be factored into the final grade, a diminished understanding, and a reduced grade. This, to me, denies teacher autonomy. Homework will not be factored into the GPA, but failure to complete the homework will result in a diminished understanding and a lower GPA. So I've tried to communicate out to the Merrimack Forum on Facebook, I hate Facebook, you know, it just, to me, it's just the easiest way to get to speak to people, and I've tried to provide as much information as possible. I also provided a presentation here at the council chambers on October 13th, which I've given you a copy of. I did peer review studies and found them, many of which I felt like you should have had before you made this decision, that you could do. And parents on the Merrimack Board were confused. They didn't think that there was any homework to be assigned, or that no homework grades would be accumulated, which is the correct answer, or no trivial homework grades would be. So there was a lot of dispassionate misunderstanding. The first lady that spoke, I agree with her in that if we're not going to count the homework, we shouldn't be assigning the homework, but that's not how this is working. Many teachers have changed their teaching paradigm to include class assignments that are not to be accomplished over several days, but not calling it homework, they're calling it classwork. The same students who were not receiving help at home before are still not going to be receiving help on this other one, so that kind of defeats the original purpose for this. For most of the quarter, Power School reflected many homework assignments that were assigned and collected, but were not graded or reviewed. Dr. McLaughlin spoke about that earlier. I've noticed around October 15th that changed, there started being some grades in there. So again, this is not fitting in as well as I had hoped. Look, people are not getting this. The homework has not been eliminated, it has just been renamed as other work. My child's homework is being collected, not graded, and in some situations, not reviewed, it's just being collected. If I was not checking her homework myself, then she potentially could be studying incorrect materials for her tests. So the chairman read earlier where the code is that the homework policy comes from, and it comes from Educational Rule 306.14, which says, as of July 2015, that each school should have an instructional program, which includes a policy on homework, including its relationship to the grading system. This is the official copy right now. There should be one for Reed's Ferry, Mastercola, Thornton's Ferry, Upper Elementary, Mastercola, and the high school. There should be one of these for every one of those that maps out what the grading policy is. We don't have that yet. My problem is, is that we have a grading system which is not being based on a body of evidence at the individual teacher's disposal. Instead, we now have an incremental feedback system of homework being replaced by a winner-take-all system, which is not a good assessment of how children work. Homework grades provide instant feedback to the student and helps the teacher modify their future lesson plans based on the learner's needs. Let's see. Homework is a specific academic purpose, such as practice, checking for understanding, applying for knowledge and skills, promote student ownership. Homework instills a sense of accomplishment and competence. Homework is a way to show performance in students' daily work, and they should be receiving credit for that. Finally, it contributes to a higher GPA, which all the rest of the towns in New Hampshire are experiencing. We're the only ones doing this experiment right now, Nashville to a certain degree, but this contributes to a higher GPA, and the students have a better chance for admission to the college of their choice, better access to merit scholarships, like my two older daughters got, and future success in college. In conclusion, I really hate to see a wonderful school district change its homework policy for the sake of an experiment. My two older daughters are a living testament for what can be accomplished by high school students here in Merrimack. To the students who are watching on television, you have the power to change things in your life today through your homework. Ask any parent who didn't finish college or didn't finish high school. Doing it when you're older is much, much harder. Going for that degree is really hard when you're out there. there and you've got a family. Their job, your job right now, number one job, is school. Not the job at the grocery store, the ladies' fashion store, what you're doing right now. That job will be there in the future. But having homework that counts for something demonstrates your drive to make a difference to your life, to succeed and to grow. I am for counting the homework grades for all those kids who are suffering from test anxiety. This will make the difference for you to accept the challenge. You can be anything you want to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bevel. Are there any questions or, do you want to begin, Mark?
Well, just, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Bevel for commenting that we did indeed have a pleasant conversation on October 2nd, I believe it was, over two hours. It was a good conversation. I appreciate your mentioning that. Just, just, you know, as Chair Barnes mentioned, we're going to have a chance to talk about this in January. And as I said to you when we met, you know, I think you and I were both very much on the same page when it came to our ultimate goal, which is trying to provide a good opportunity for students to demonstrate what they know. We might differ on the means, but certainly in the outcome. The, the one thing that I just want to say, because I, I think, I recognize that there's a lot about the rollout that could have been done better. And I think I said that to you on the 2nd of October when we met. The one thing that I think should be absolutely clear to everybody by now, however, is, and it wasn't clear in your remarks right now, is that homework has the same power and purpose in Merrimack now as it has always had. There, in the early days of the rollout, which I take responsibility for if it was confused, there was a suggestion that since we're not grading homework anymore, homework doesn't count in Merrimack. That would have been a complete abrogation of the board policy, which requires homework. Nothing could be further from the truth. So I think it'd be really good to just establish that fact right here. Nothing could be further from the truth. The fact of the matter is that it is well-established that homework does indeed provide the proper practice for students if it's differentiated, calibrated to student needs, and is reviewed and returned. To the extent that that practice still isn't happening with uniformity is no different in Merrimack than in any other district. That is an excuse. We must get better, and we will continue to get better. But that doesn't change the fact that homework is a very important part of a student's life. So I think there should be no debate about that anymore, at the very least. It wasn't clear in your comments that, that that was understood. So I just want to make that point. There should be, so because your point is well-taken, that we, we can't have parents be confused about it. So let's just be really clear. It is important in Merrimack and continues to be important. The one other thing that I'll, two other things I would just comment on. The idea of self-reliance, it's interesting, because typically self-reliance comes from, from something internal and intrinsic, not an external thing. So one of the things that we're really trying to do is to try to encourage our students to recognize that the completion of homework is a value in and of itself. Whether or not they're going to get a letter grade or a numerical grade for having done it, it's clear, just like is in sports, if you practice, you'll get better. And the coach doesn't promise playing time if you come and practice. Just that's a given. You'll practice, and then we'll see how it works out. So the parallel there, and we learn at our youngest grades, the kids can really rise to an occasion. And so they're doing that, I think, in many cases. And the other thing that you and I talked about has to do with the issue of the GPA. It does, in fact, increase the GPA. And then the question is, is that
Excuse me?
The inclusion of graded homework does, in fact, increase the GPA.
How so?
Well, you said contributes to a higher GPA.
Okay. I'll, I'll let you finish, and then I'll let you speak.
Okay. And, and in fact, it theoretically could. But the question then becomes, what is the value, what is the understanding that underlines that GPA? And that's something that we've really been trying to work a lot about in our district. So we'll say more about that in January. But, you know, that's, that's just a question that we've really been trying to tackle in Merrimack quite a bit, the difference between an understanding and, and a, a grade that may not reflect the understanding or the depth of the understanding. That's just what, and what we talked about when we were together.
Okay. I guess I respectfully disagree. You're saying that homework is important, but you've now taken away the, the value of it because it is no longer being counted towards the GPA, whether it's 5%, 10%. Again, it used to be an autonomy of the teachers to decide what their rubric would be. Now, this new protocol has banned teachers from counting homework. So they've found another way. And you have the model of formative assessments and summative assessments. Of, formative assessments are all those things you do before the major tests. The teachers need more items in the grade book for them to understand that the kids are getting the material and they're understanding it. If we're taking away homework grades, then the teachers are being very inventive in creating other classwork things that count as formative that are being modeled in. So even the teachers are confused. What I'm asking is, please take the shackles off the teachers and let them go back to counting homework. I don't understand why we're not counting homework because we're still doing it, and just in a different name.
What I would say is, I think January is going to tell the tale. If we change things mid-course, I don't think we're able to measure the effectiveness of, of what we're trying to accomplish. A couple of things, a couple of clarifiers. Our first parent you had mentioned, she doesn't, she doesn't want, you know, does not think her kids need to do homework. And I think she said quite the opposite. She said her kids do homework so they know that they're prepared for, for assessment in, in the classroom, which is testing. I'm getting a nod from her, so I'm definitely summarizing what you're saying accurately. So thank you. And that's important to us, that, that's exactly what we want to happen. That's, that's the design of this program. And I think that, that's what, if we change course now and have the teachers take those homework grades, we have nothing left to measure. And, you know, as we're rolling out a program, you know, the first quarter, we definitely had some learning curves. I think that what we have, that you probably aren't aware of, are weekly leadership meetings. And someone else who's at them doesn't miss one is, is our middle school principal who's here tonight. But weekly leadership meetings give the opportunity for all of the principals and the administrators to go over the news of the week, the issues of the day, and, you know, what, what refinements need to happen in their buildings. So what this was designed to do tonight was to take that feedback. And I think that a leadership meeting is definitely going to have this agenda item on it very, very soon. Probably, probably Wednesday, well, actually not Wednesday, because we're on school. A week, they're on Wednesdays. It's a week from Wednesday now, because school is closed this week. So on that note, refinement doesn't just happen once a year. It happens every single week. And with this feedback, and with this dialogue from teachers, with, with the dialogue from parents, I'm sorry. So we've gotten three, I'd say varying, I'd say the spectrum tonight. We have one that has not felt the protocols that have been right for his family. We have one that needs better understanding of how this protocol's being rolled out so that they know what to expect. And we have one that really sees the protocols as a way, kind of as we design it, and, and definitely sees it as a benefit. So what does that mean? That there's refinements to happen in communication, in application, and that's, that's, we spend 40 weeks a year instructing, and 40 weeks a year, the leadership team meets, probably more. But making sure that all refinements happen based on how we're conducting business of the day, how we're looking to increase educational outcomes. So on that note, we are definitely going to be meeting in January to go over the first semester of our instructional rollout, how this protocol has gone out, refinements that they have learned needed to be made, how they've made them, how we're going to measure, and if this was the right, was the right protocol for the district. So always, we're not here to be set in our ways. This protocol wouldn't exist if we were, because we would have gone the way we've been doing it for the last 30 years. So on that note, I do look forward to January. And the day that comes, we need to make sure that we are keeping a consistent expectation. But then how we communicate those expectations to teachers and parents, there's always room for improvement. And that's a weekly practice in every area of our district operation, I think. So I, I see that happening for the rest of the year, honestly, on a variety of topics, this one being important and included. So on that note, Mr. Bevel, you still technically have the floor. Are there any other questions or comments you had, or? Okay, Cindy?
Oh, I just wanted to add that when we do talk about this in January, what I would like to see is some feedback maybe by cohorts, I guess for lack of a better word, you know, at what is the feedback, what is the data that we have from our youngest students and our oldest students would be one, as well as those that might be in IEPs and 504 plans, and how this protocol impacts. Obviously, every student is different and unique, but I would be looking to see what the feedback is from those that work with those students.
Andy?
The other thing I'd like to see, too, and I appreciate, Mr. Bevel, you coming, talking, but something you didn't mention, and I haven't heard anybody really mention, that I'm going to be looking for, is when we look at students moving on, we look at two things: grades, competencies. And one of the things that I want to make sure that we look at is how the utilization of homework applies to competencies as well. Because there's two benefits for homework. One could be a grade, or at least accomplishment. But the other is showing the teacher evidence of competency, which are the two factors for moving on and stuff. So I think for me and for the board, understanding how that plays into competencies is an important dimension as well. So.
Michael?
So just a couple of points that I'd like to put out to the parents that are out there. A couple of things that were brought up tonight was that there's some discrepancy, possibly, in the policy that states that it should be evaluated and returned, the homework. If you are seeing that, I, I would ask you to reach out to the teacher and have clarification on that. Make sure that it is fully understood versus just hearsay. And I even got it from my own kid, that I heard one thing, even though that's not what was actually presented, it can happen very easily. So reach out to the teacher, see for clarification. If you don't get the answer that you expect, go to the department head, and then go further up to the principal or something like that. Another thing is that I've heard about testing anxiety. The school district is very open to different methods of testing and showing competency. So I would ask that if you do have a child that has an anxiety, to reach out again to the teacher and discuss that with them so that you can best understand how to approach testing with your child. Then the last item I would like to say is that I understand, Mr. Bevel, that you stated that our policy is not in agreement with the state regulations in saying that we need one for each school.
Correct.
We have one for the actual full district, which actually covers every school.
That's not what the regulation says.
So if you could put that on the agenda item for clarification in January so that we can get clarification of whether that is correct or not, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
[inaudible]
So thank you.
Yeah. And as part of the New Hampshire School Boards Association membership, we can actually have a policy review. So I'm sure Barrett and Will will be glad to do that as part of our membership.
Please do so.
Okay. Oh, just saw them last week, a little late, but that's okay. I know where to find them. Is your hand up, or are you flexing your fingers?
Over my hand.
Okay. Dexterity. We're fine. As, as long as I'm not ignoring you, we're fine. Okay.
Okay. I have two questions. One, what drove us to decide that we weren't going to count homework grades anymore? Were there other school districts in, in New Hampshire, Massachusetts that was driving this? And then my second question is, when we come to January and you are going to do your evaluation, what's the criteria you're going to be using for deciding whether this is a pass or fail?
Mark, if you would like to take the first question for starters.
So as we talked about, you remember in our meeting, I talked to you about two things. We have the beginning of an elementary standards-based report card. And we are meeting with teachers and principals, because everything we do in the district is, as will be evidenced, I think, tonight with the phys ed teachers, we really involve teachers and administrators in what we do. So one of the first things that we talked about when we convened that group, saying we haven't had a new elementary report card in a long time, it's probably good to review whether the report card we have is as good as it needs to be. We said, well, the very first fundamental thing is, can we have an agreement about what ought to be in the report card? And from there, it logically came into a question of, well, what are we including in our report cards now? And it was revealed then, well, some teachers are including homework and some aren't. So then it prompted a long series of discussions about things like equity. Well, if I'm a student in a class with a teacher who doesn't assign homework, you know, is that as fair as the experience as students in a class with a teacher who does? And then, since there's no guidance about what it's counting, should we really, you know, if it counts 5% or 10%, that level of discrepancy needs to be addressed. So as we discussed in our meeting, that was the impetus for discussing this even at all. And it prompted our really intensive review of practices and protocols, and the fundamental question, which is, how does a gra, does, how, how much integrity does a grade have when it conflates behaviors and academic performance? And the tendency to do or not do homework is a behavior. It's, it's a behavior. I either do it or I don't do it. It's not an academic thing. It's a behavior. So there's a lot of research that talks about conflating behavior with a performance, and then having one solid outcome that tries to express to a parent what a student can know and be able to do. So we've been struggling with that for a long time. That was the impetus for it. And as I also mentioned to you when we met, at the same time that that was happening, we don't have currently a secondary report card committee. But we thought if these issues are germane K to six, they're probably relevant seven through 12. So that's when we formed the second group that tackled the very same question, the elementary group, because it impacted the development of our report card, which is in its early stages, and the other group, because it impacts what will eventually become a report card review, and also just our practices in general. So we didn't want to have a bifurcated system. We wanted K-12 to look at this. So that answers, I hope, the first question about what was the impetus for even beginning this.
I guess we'll take question number two, then. And that is, what will the board do with the data?
No, the question was, is what is the criteria? How will you determine what makes this pass or fail? Is it parental input, as Chris said, student input? What, what are the criterias that will say this was successful, this was partially successful, or an absolute failure?
The first thing we're doing in January is we're taking in the data. So what is, what is the impact on student outcomes with this new protocol?
Okay.
So that's the first piece of data point we have. So based on that, it gives us where we feel we need to go. When it comes to student and parental output, that's a year-round job. That's not a, that's not a one-time job. So we have a communications committee for which we do have a, a school board rep that sits to that committee. And when it comes to parental and student feedback, that is a focus of our district. And we also have the chair of that committee, who's our director of technology and library media services, actually, in the audience tonight. And they're varying, their focus is to get that kind of feedback. So as we make decisions, they don't have to have a timer on it specifically. If we find that the data is very strong and doesn't compel us to make a change, but parental and student feedback drives a different decision, we need to, we need to put it all together. And we need research to go with it. And I know that the research was done going into this. And, and we, and we do have some research as well. We're, we have kind of a ringer here. But one of our board members has a PhD in education. She teaches teachers for a living. So her finger's on the pulse of that all the time. It's kind of nice to have that. So when it comes to that perspective, we're very fortunate, and, and I think unique in the way that we do have that as, from the governing side of the table, not just the implementation side of the table. We have someone that, that breathes that space from a, you know, from a training, training up perspective. So we're actually quite spoiled that way. So in that case, you know, when it comes to the criteria, I think the data is the first, first step. And if the data and the dialogue around that data drives a decision, then, you know, different from what we're doing, then that will, that will come. So, but it will, it will be deliberated right here. Naomi, the ringer is talking.
So since I've been called out in that way
You really were.
Thank you. I would first say that there are people in this room, by virtue of knowing their children, who know far more than I ever could about the way their children learn and work with homework. But that put aside, for my own, my own purposes, what I'm going to be looking for in the data is patterns of student performance. I'm curious about specifically how students perform. And then if we And then if we bring in the qualitative side of what the experiences of the students and parents are, then that can round out the picture for us.
Wonderful, thank you. So, I said I wasn't going to refer to the other document, but if you would look at page 19 on the other document I gave you all. In the presentation I made in October 13th, which I'm sorry was not put on cable, because there was no staff to do that here, one of the things I pointed out was, I was trying to find other communities in the United States that were trying to implement this. And Baltimore County, Maryland, was trying to do something like this. And after they received the initial bad press and miscommunications, the Baltimore County School Board instituted a revised grading and reporting procedures manual, along with a training video, which spells out the new homework grading policy. It created two categories of homework, which I would like to have included in the discussion. One, homework completed for practice or preparation for instruction, homework that is reviewed by the teacher to inform instructional decisions, and for which the teacher provides feedback, but is not graded for accuracy or quality. And then the other one is homework completed to evaluate learning, homework that is assigned to collect evidence of skill or understanding after instruction, practice, and feedback. So, there are, what I feel like is two arguments for homework. We don't want to give kids busy work, but we need to provide formative assessments that count towards the cumulative grade. One of the things else that's in this packet, and I'm sure Dr. Schoenfeld is familiar with, and that is the new rubrics for grading, which is the standards-based grading methodology, product, process, progress. And a lot of people don't understand all that. I am coming up to speed on it myself in the past two months. I would be willing to help out in any way I can to create our own grading and reporting manual, so that, you know, what homework we do counts, and what is trivial stuff doesn't count. But to me, I have two daughters who have graduated through the system where homework counted. Some teachers gave it, some teachers didn't, some gave a lot. And with this no homework protocol, my junior is, got three hours of homework every night. So, we're quite busy still with homework. What I'm looking for is, what is going to be the rubrics for deciding how that counts, and how that we can use the formative assessments to value that towards their GPA? Because other schools are doing that. And we're going to be competing with the Amhersts and the Bedford's and the Timberlands when our children go for merit scholarships in the college of their choice. And if we're taking away the homework grade, that's a knock for some experimental purpose that I'm not happy with. So, thank you for your time.
Oops, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Bevel. And we're on, oh, I'm sorry, Carol.
Carol Lang, 7 Wilson Hill Road. I'm in a slightly different position, because I'm speaking as the parent of a former student. So, I'm trying to relate her experiences when she was here in the district with what I'm hearing now. I've tried to stay open-minded, watched the school board meeting, I attended Mr. Bevel's presentation, and on balance, I'm in favor of this protocol. What I saw when my daughter attended Merrimack School District was that homework grading resulted in some cases artificially inflating grades, and in other cases artificially deflating grades. To me, a grade point average is supposed to be a measurement of the student's mastery of the subject matter. And I don't think homework that may be done by the student alone, may be done with their siblings, may be done with the assistance of parents, who knows, you know, how it's getting done. And then also the differences between teachers of how much they count it. So, to me, the counting of graded homework does not reflect a student's mastery of the subject matter. However, I am concerned, I suspected it, and Chris's comments sort of reinforced what I thought, that there's probably a great disparity between teachers as to how this is being implemented. And I think the important thing here is, A, homework is still assigned, it's reviewed promptly by the teachers, and it is specifically, I'll use the word corrected, because I can't come up with a better term, but basically, the student is receiving valid feedback as to which portions they got correct, which portions they got wrong, you know. I don't want to see teachers looking at this as, yes, you did your homework or you didn't, and that's the end of the story. I want it to be valid feedback. I think that we do have to make sure that there are options for students, as was discussed, who have test anxiety, that there's other ways to address that. There needs to be some accommodations made for students with 504s and IEPs. But grading homework, to me, it's kind of like what we joke about participation rewards. It doesn't really reflect whether the student has mastered the material. Maybe other methods need to be introduced, some other way of measuring that in addition to tests and grades. But I don't think the homework was the appropriate method for analyzing that. And I look forward to following, you know, as you proceed with this and how it comes out. I am a little concerned, though, when you talk about data, because I'm not sure what data you're talking about. If the data you're talking about is whether students' GPAs go up or down, I'm not sure that's a valid measurement of anything. Because if we say previously grading homework was artificially distorting the grading, then I would expect to see those GPAs change. So, I'm not sure that's a valid measure. So, I guess, maybe I'm premature in asking the question, but what do you mean by data?
Go ahead, Mark.
So, I appreciate Mrs. Lang, that last point, because it is true, as I've said to almost everybody who's spoken to me about this, that there is a natural expectation that grades themselves will likely decrease in the short term, while students and parents are getting used to this. And remember, that many students were taught by teachers who didn't grade homework. So, this isn't the massive shift in a way that's projected, because some didn't. This is just standardizing that practice. But the thing that I do think is definitely important to explore, and I would hold is a good, you know, data point to discuss, is the degree to which we can assess how students are relating to homework as a behavior that they need to engage in for their own benefit. So, there are ways that we can try to figure that out, and we're currently trying to do that. But the idea that homework in and of itself is going to inspire students, you know, the graded homework is going to inspire students to do their homework, it hasn't worked for all students in the past. I mean, when teachers graded homework, and some kids did it, and some kids didn't do it. So, the question then is, what kinds of things do we have to do to inspire students to recognize that the completion of homework is a benefit to themselves? So, maybe if we haven't in the past differentiated homework so much, so it's a one-size-fits-all, that's a practice that needs to change. We're talking to teachers daily about that. If it's a kind of homework that isn't calibrated to my need, then why would I do it if it isn't, if it isn't helping? If it's too hard for me, or if it's too easy for me, why would I do it? Sometimes I don't need that kind of practice, but I need another kind of practice. So, I think a data point that we're going to be looking at is, what are the kinds of behaviors teachers can engage in that inspire students to value the practice of homework and of the value of the practice of practice, which clearly has a correlation to performance? And the value of that lies outside the carrot of a grade. So, that's one of the things that I think I'm going to be trying to look, to look to, to provide some information about, as a qualitative piece of data, experience factor, once we have it. This is one example.
I follow the point you're making, but it sounds to me like it's going to be a very hard thing to measure in a
It's going to take, it's going to, it's going to take, well, what it's going to take is time. You know, the, this is, to us, this is an example of an initiative that is like other initiatives we've taken on in Merrimack, trying to push us forward, trying to help us to get better. Contrary to what people might think, we really do care about that. And, and these things need to take time. It would be great if things just fell into place right away. So, you're right. But there is a way to get at it. There is a way to evaluate with parents through surveys. There is a way to evaluate with students. We have to be careful about conducting surveys with students. But there are ways to try to get at, you know, and with teachers. I mean, when you have engaged in a practice of differentiating your homework, what's been the response you've gotten from students? I mean, the completion factor, has that changed? Is it stable? Has it gotten worse? I mean, those are objective things that we can look at, and we can begin to try to draw some conclusions, but it's going to take a little time.
One question, because I was pondering this even before tonight, just based on when I watched the prior school board meeting, when you talked about differentiating homework. While in an ideal world, it would be nice if every student had homework tailored to their specific needs. I don't think that's a practical thing from the teacher's perspective. You can't be having teachers assigning 100 different homework assignments to 100 different students, and then assessing each of those assignments. So, I'm not sure how you go about achieving what you're saying.
So, the board policy requires it, though. I mean, it talks about, you know, homework that's provided based on the specific needs of students. So, the board policy talks about that. And, you know, it isn't 100 different homework assignments for 100 different students. Students broadly fall into categories. This group need work on fractions. This group have fractions, but they need work on the distributive property and what have you. So, so, it's not, and many teachers do it. I mean, we're very blessed in Merrimack with many, many teachers who are constantly evaluating and reevaluating their practice. And so, it's not, it's a, it's a change in, for some, it's a change in practice, but it's not a change in practice that's monumentally hard to achieve. And this is about what's best for students, and we talk a lot about that. It's not, you know, what is easy for me. Teaching isn't an easy endeavor. But it's about what's, what's right for students. And so, we talk a lot about that openly in our district, and have, as we've discussed this protocol. That's the best I can tell you right now. But our guiding principle is what's, what's best for students. And, and at this point, we're doing this in good faith, trying to make a good decision. There's no, why, why would there be any ulterior motive, other than trying to figure out what's best for students, and trying to be, you know, have a mindset that keeps us open for that? I mean, that's the only goal.
I applaud the effort, and I hope it achieves the desired outcome. I personally found the subject of homework very frustrating when I had a daughter in the system, and I really think not grading it is the right way to go. I do have concerns, which were somewhat reinforced tonight by hearing other people talking about some teachers are not probably giving as complete feedback to the students on the homework, now that, you know, they're not looking for a grade, they, or, you know, check you completed it, or no, you didn't, at end of story. And I'm sure that's not all, all teachers, but I would like to see a effort made to make it a little more uniform across the district. And my final comment would be that, to me, schooling and grading ultimately has a long-term purpose. And I think that is, A, to prepare students for future careers, and B, to prepare them if they go on to higher education post-secondary. And I think the purpose of a GPA is to measure the student's mastery. And when they get out into the real world of work, or even in the college level, they're going to be faced with the fact that just showing up doesn't really count. If you have a job, and you show up to every meeting, but you don't get the job done, you're not going to last long. So, I think really students need to get that same message, that they really need to master the work. How that gets demonstrated is subject to discussion, but the mastery is the end goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Naomi?
Yeah, I wanted to add one point that partly, thank you, Carol, addresses something that was asked there, but may be of general interest. To my mind, not grading homework is what opens it up to differentiation, in that if there is graded homework that counts towards the grade, then there is a responsibility that it be in some way equivalent across students. If it's not graded, you have the ability to give different things. So, here's an example. If I were teaching a classroom in high school, and I discovered that one of my students had never quite mastered long division, and everybody else is working on something completely different. If I want to give them homework specifically on long division, when everybody else is working on more advanced work, the question would then be, do they receive equivalent towards their grade credit for such a different level work? But as soon as there's nothing in a grade that's being affected, I'm freed to provide whatever that student needs, without the complexities of how it relates to their classmates. And so, that's one of the things that I find is, is most promising in not grading for completion, which is in and of itself. The other point that's come up a few times, when we talk about data, there are two primary forms of data. One is very, very popular in our culture at the moment, and that's numbers. But it's not the only form of data. There's this thing called qualitative data, which is when you ask people questions about their experience, and you gather all of those answers together and form a conclusion. It takes a lot more time, as was related to here, and it takes a lot more effort. But it can provide some really interesting answers. So, I'm glad to hear that we will have both, that we'll have numbers and perspective in words.
Thank you very much. And on that note, Chris Puzzo.
I have a question for Dr. McLaughlin. Is there any distinction between classwork and homework that is in the policy, or is that a teacher thing?
The policy specifically talks about homework. So, it doesn't refer to classwork in the policy.
Well, because there's this news going around the high school that they can't grade it if it's given before, after 15 minutes. No, the, there's a new, there's this news going around the high school that if it's given after 15 minutes before the end of class, it does, the teacher cannot grade it. Is that an actual thing, or is that just?
No.
Okay. Because that's what I'm hearing, teachers just starting to follow that, I think.
There's an awful lot that gets said in our culture right now that isn't factually true. That would be one.
It's right up there with the pool on the fourth floor, I guess.
Mm-hmm.
Freshman jokes, still not, still not a pool, promise. So, on that note, if there's, is there any other dialogue from parents? Seeing them, we're closing item number three and opening up item number four, which is the request to conduct speak-up survey and invite to the table Director of Technology and Library Services Nancy Rose. Welcome and good evening.
Hello. Good evening. Pre-Happy Thanksgiving. So, this is a repeat of the survey that we did a couple of years ago. It's run by Project Tomorrow, which is a national nonprofit in support of education. And it is a survey that is anonymous and entirely voluntary, and people can participate as students, teachers, parents, or community members. And it just gives us information about how people feel about the use of technology, access to technology, the value of technology in education. And the, what I like about it is it's a nationally-developed survey. It's done much better than I would do. And then we get the data at the school level, the district level, and then it's also part of the New Hampshire information, and then the national information. So, it's just a really nice source. When we did this a couple of years ago, we, I came back and shared information, I think it was in February of the year that we did it. The survey is open and goes until January 19th, so we do still have a fair amount of time to participate. And then my request this year would be to just be given opportunity to just continue to administer if you give the approval. So, to be able to do it every year. So, that's my request.
Okay. Are there any questions about the speak-up survey? So, Nancy, on this, I'm hearing that you, it closes in January, which means it opens?
It opened in October.
It opened. Okay. So, that gives you a little time. So, what you're looking for tonight would be a decision from the board at this point.
If it's possible.
Because a two-week rule would take a lot of time to gather.
Yeah.
Michael?
Thank you, Nancy. Can you just explain how you'll go about asking for permission?
Can you just explain how you'll go about asking for permission from the students and the parents to actually, so that the general public would actually understand the policy?
Right. And I know you're referring to the law regarding surveying of students. This is something, I did ask my colleagues in other districts about it, and it's an entirely voluntary survey, and it is anonymous. So it would be something that they would do on their own time. It is, it's not anything that's related to them as individuals, there would be absolutely no way for me to know who said what. So I wouldn't even be able to get permission, because then I wouldn't know who took it, if that makes sense.
It does, but so you would just put in the general public for someone to take, and then that individual would take it?
Yeah, and it's related to the academic use. The laws around academic surveys versus surveys about personal habits, like that's a really gross, broad generalization. This is really about the use of technology in school and how it affects education. So it kind of, I don't know if it would even land within the restrictions of the law.
Yeah, I was just kind of putting it out there, because obviously a lot of questions come up from many individuals in the community in regards to any survey that's actually administered, but it actually doesn't sound like you're administering any survey.
I'm not.
What it's doing is you're just asking people to partake on their own general time.
Yeah, and I get the data back from the national organization, and it comes back in a report, and it is based on how people identify. So, you know, the reality is people could fake. I mean, but what we got back last time was actually really nice quality, and the commentary was actually really useful as well.
I appreciate it. Thank you for the clarification.
Cindy, was your hand up?
Yeah, I was trying to remember how we actually distributed that. It was, did we send a link out through Power School? Is that what we did?
We put it on the websites. I think we put an announcement on the Patch and possibly in the Telegraph, not the Telegraph, the Merrimack.
Journal.
Journal. And then I think we also did a School Messenger announcement and just pointed people to the websites.
That's what I think I remember was the School Messenger. So you would look for those same, would you?
It would be like a news item on each website with a little speak-up logo.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Michael?
I motion that we allow Nancy Rose to provide the speak-up survey to the greater community.
Second, can I just throw two things back at you? Are you waiving the two-week rule? And are you giving her license through 2021 in your motion?
I am waiving the two-week rule, and I'm giving permission until the next board comes together.
Okay. So is there a second to that motion?
I have a question.
Sure.
Would that be annually? Is that what you mean, or?
At this point, I'm just not making the next board's decision for them, so just when the next election comes up, that board will have to decide to go beyond that.
For the year?
For the year.
Okay, I'll second that, that's fine.
Okay. So we will do it annually, so the board can be, current board will always be kept abreast of it?
That's fine.
Okay. So are there any comments to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries 500, waiving the two-week rule.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Good night.
We look forward to the data.
Yeah, I'll bring, I'll come back with it in the spring, whenever it works.
Excellent. Thank you. We're on to item number five, which is the presentation of the Merrimack School District Special Education Procedures Plan. And I bring to the table Director of Special Student Services, I'm going to get this right, okay, John Fabrizio. I got it right, right?
Yes, you did. Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Thanks, John.
And this is kind of one of those ones where, to clarify, that it's hard, because I am the Director of Student Services, but as I said when we made the name change, one of my primary roles still is, and my primary role is still to oversee the laws and the rules that govern special ed in our district. And in one of those, recently, we had some pretty major rule changes in the state of New Hampshire. And in doing so, in March 24th, they came through with the approval of new rules. And on that, around the end of June, those late-June memos that we get, we had a memo from the state saying that we have to update all of our current special ed manuals, is the former term it was called. And this board, twice in my tenure here as director, has approved my manual that didn't necessarily need to be updated, but I had some change in personnel, so I thought in 2014 it'd be appropriate to come before you and change it. Now with the new plan, I find myself here again because of some of the new rules and the updates to that. And you received in your pack a memo that I wrote to Marge explaining kind of the rules that govern, why we need this. Often, this procedure plan now has certain assurances in it that oversee our grant writing. And without the assurances that we have certain policies in place, and that we have this plan in place, we cannot apply for some of our grant funding. So it's an important, it becomes a very important piece. And as I said, this came in June, I had to write my grant, as we say now, so this kind of, as we go through this process. And what I noticed in there was, in the new governing rules, they had a call for a records retention, a records policy in there, what we were doing about data and records. And this board graciously thanked you, thanked you, thanked you, after a long period of time, has approved a policy to look at our records and allowing me to follow the new rules that are associated with the destruction of some of those records after a period of time. And we have that policy in place now, which is nice. So I'm able to supplement that into the new plan. So kind of what is in our plan? My computer has just frozen, I apologize. So what's in the plan? So there's a list of contacts of all the key personnel, both in central office and all of the coordinators for special ed in each of the buildings. There is the process on how we go out, and we've brought Sheila Haven to the board before, and how she goes out and uses Childfind, and we really, we connect with all the different providers around our town, and we try to bring in students that we know are suspected of a disability, and how we do that. And then those that have either elected to not have themselves still as part of special ed, or have moved beyond special ed, they go on to a thing called Childfind, and we have to yearly notify them. So it talks about those policies and how we do that. And of course confidentiality, how we oversee FERPA and make sure the regulations and procedures are in place to make sure that we follow that. Information about all of our schools and our programs, and that we offer continuum of programs, from both a very restricted program to a fully included program and a continuum in between. And then about how do we evaluate students and place students and make decisions around that? And then how are we overseen? And a couple of years ago, I was here, and I talked about our focus monitoring and our audit process we had to go through as a district. I have to explain that process in my manual. And then what are our responsibilities to other schools in our area, such as private schools and charter schools? And then how do we have research-based materials is all in there. And then, of course, I talked about assurances and kind of that we do follow all of these, and we have to document that for our grants. So overall, what's different? What's changed? What's changing different? I went from about an 80-page document down to roughly, roughly about a 55-page document. So it's lessened in numbers. And in those changes, it allowed for me to have a lot of current information that is a lot more linked-based, where it directs them to the DOE, it directs them to the Parent Advocacy Center, it directs them to the federal centers. So this manual now, I mean, this formal manual is now a plan, is at a different level where it has to be reviewed yearly and updated yearly, because I also have to put in there about what am I doing to grow my staff professionally and professional development each year? So this has a lot more of a fluid document that's regulated into what the new requirement is, versus a manual that's out in the shelf. This is more of a plan that we have to update and keep current every year. So I guess I'm here more of information purposes, and I guess then approval at this point, because it's going to be a yearly living document now, versus the old document that went through and had to have a kind of stamp of the board on it. But I wanted to inform you that it is changed. I linked you to where it will be on the site. We'll communicate that out to parents, that it's available. I'll make sure I go out through my parent support group to make sure they know that. And we can continue to, the nice thing about this, I continue to add resources as they come in, when we have guidelines for like, guidelines for how to get independent evaluations, this new records policy. I can include those all in this plan, because it's living and it's a breathing document each year. So that's kind of it. Do you have any questions about why we need the plan or the plan itself?
Any questions? Just one.
Sure.
I know that you shared a link. Is there also going to be hard copy for those who are requesting it?
Yes, yes, yes. I keep, I'm required to keep hard copies in my office, and I often have those, and if anyone requests it, we can certainly provide that for them.
What about five and a quarter floppy disk? No kidding.
Not anymore. And that's kind of what it is. It's a change from, it's updated with technology, and it's a good thing.
Excellent. Sounds great. No other questions from the board? And thank you for keeping us updated on that, and something tells me you're sticking around for our exciting dialogue tonight, maybe not.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, it's Adam that gets to stay for multiple.
Adam's the next.
Good for you.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Have a happy Thanksgiving, John. We'll go on to item number six, which is the first quarter curriculum review. And Mark Flores, yours.
Okay, thank you. My, the printer in the office wasn't working, or I couldn't get it working this afternoon, so I have my notes on my phone, so that's what I'm going to be doing. So this year, our two main areas of curriculum focus are math and phys ed and health. In a few minutes, members of the K-12 phys ed and health curriculum team, who are so kindly sticking around, led by Principal Adam Carragher, will provide details on the excellent progress that they're making in redesigning a district phys ed and health curriculum for the first time in many years. As you know, we are halfway through the first semester of implementation of our K-12 district math curriculum and our newly adopted K-8 math program in Visions 2.0. Educators receive two days of training related to the curriculum rollout and the new Envisions program during August Academy, and just last week, in a train-the-trainer professional development model, received an additional day of customized training per grade span. So one day of training for K-2 teachers, one day for three to five teachers, and one day for a six through eight teachers. In Merrimack, excuse me, we always seek to refine our work, a process of continual evolution towards improvement. Relative to the math curriculum implementation, our district K-12 team continues this year to refine alignment to the new program and to the guiding standards. As with any initiative, as with any initiative, experience provides the best opportunity for refinement, and we continue to use our experience with this double implementation to provide the best math instruction we can for all our students. I'm grateful to the district K-12 math committee, all teachers, and to Upper Elementary School Principal Marsha McGill, who leads this work, for their dedication to this effort and for their recognition of the fact that even after we have an officially implemented curriculum and supportive math program, there is always work to do to make it better. And I just want to make just another statement, that as you see right here, all of our curriculum work in Merrimack, always, at its heart involves teachers. We do not have, could have, but we don't have a top-down process of developing curriculum. Relative to these folks, I don't do their job. I can't do their job, and I couldn't even if I tried. And so it's very important to have teachers and administrators at the root of the work that they do, to lead and guide the discussion. And we have a unique model in Merrimack, and I'm very grateful to the board for allowing that model, and very grateful to teachers who continually invest their time and energy, because they don't take sabbaticals when they do this. They work every day, and they do this, you know, also, and it's a very big deal, and I just want to call it out. So in addition, Director of Technology and Library Media Nancy Rose and I work very closely to assess curriculum implementation in the context of current and future technology needs. Director Rose has been a consistent voice for ensuring that as we continue to refine our curriculum and instructional practices, we must also be planful and mindful about what constitutes appropriate technology for these purposes, so that we acquire and support what we need to leverage our resources to achieve those goals. As with other references I've made tonight to the word refinement, this is another example of how the changing times require an entirely new way of looking at and refining our current practices. Just within the last 10 years or so, the influence of and the use of technology in curriculum and instruction has significantly redefined the relationship between student and teacher, and requires us to constantly evaluate the way curriculum and the resources that support it get developed and implemented. Work continues as well on the development of a new standards-based report card for grades K through six. Like all our curriculum teams, this committee is also made up of educators from all grades, as well as each of the four elementary principals. In the past year, we have carefully reviewed standards-based report cards from districts throughout the country, have read and reviewed research on the development and implementation of standards-based report cards, including the rationale for developing them in the first place. We have begun to find consensus on reporting categories and reporting scales, even as we continue to research best practice in this area. As with other initiatives in the Merrimack School District, like educator evaluation, for example, we recognize that in the fast-paced environment of contemporary education, new research on how students learn, how students demonstrate how they learn, and how they best, and how best to reflect that learning, provides the best key to future success. And it also implies that something that's been in place for a long time, as our elementary report card has been, by definition, needs a review, just like our educator evaluation system did. We'll continue to share with the board the progress of this committee as it begins to develop draft documents, but still, that's quite a distance off. Before I introduce the phys ed and health team members, I'll also share with you that our elementary literacy work progresses, as it always does, as a continual process of refinement. This year, we've solidified our practices to ensure compliance with the state law on dyslexia training, though our practices have been very solid in this area for a long time, even prior to the enactment of the law, and we've been asked for and have provided guidance to other districts needing help in this area. In addition, we continue to refine our writing program implementation, our reading comprehension and literacy block, supporting students with data learned through formative assessments like running records and other assessment measures, and provide ongoing support to teachers in progress monitoring of their students and writing strengths and challenges. And in addition to that, as you know, our newly adopted science curriculum is in place. However, the final step in that process is the high school implementation, and right now, the team is taking feedback from teachers, as they've done with every grade prior, to ensure that it's rolling out as planned, if there are any questions, any resource needs, and then the team continues to be responsive, and that's the process that's worked in a number of places. And I also want to just call out Bill Morris, Assistant Principal at the Upper Elementary School, whose work on this has been exemplary, and a number of folks at the state DOE and districts around the state who've learned about this really innovative process of curriculum design and rollout, have contacted Bill and have asked him for presentations and guidance on how to do similar work. So very proud of Bill and the team that he's compiled there. So I'm happy before this team comes up to address any questions that you might have about ongoing curriculum initiatives.
Are there any questions on first quarter? Michael?
I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to thank you for continuing to evolve the teaching and learning of individuals, or also how you're teaching the children of this community. I think it's great to assess and reevaluate everything that we're doing. Thank you.
Andy?
So I know, excuse me, I know this is the first quarter that you're rolling out sort of the new math curriculum. Is there any input you've been getting from parents through parent conferences or things like that, as to whether this new model is better, worse, any information you've got?
The most consistent feedback that I've gotten from parents, and that's directly to me, but more indirectly through principals to me, is that it's hard. They don't say that generally as a bad thing. They're recognizing that it's rigorous. It's a highly language-based program, and so teachers are having to really work hard to make sure that they can adjust their instruction to accommodate for the heavy language base, so heavy on word problems and word problem work, which is all part of the application process of math. So as we were talking about tonight, it's not just about getting an answer, right or wrong, two plus two is four. I might be able to do that with automaticity, but if I can't conceptually understand that, it doesn't really matter. conceptually understand that, it doesn't really matter that I can produce it and reproduce it at will if I don't understand. So the strength of the program is that it really works to that and a number of people are commenting on the rigor of the program. The online component is one of the star features of it. Nancy has been great in helping us to make sure that we can leverage and maximize all of those components, but good feedback from parents about, about that. Having said that, at the training last week, some of the feedback from parents that we got through teachers was that some components of that, some parent home links are a little hard to negotiate. And so the trainer from the publisher said, gave each of our teachers who went to that training a link to the Pearson Education website, customer feedback link. And Pearson has a reputation for being pretty responsive and so she said, I, the consultant, can respond and say, here's what I'm hearing, but if teachers on behalf of parents or tell parents to go to the site and say, I'm trying to use this home link and it's hard to negotiate, they'll speed up and, and address it. So that's generally the feedback that I've, I've gotten so far on implementation.
Michael?
I'd just like to follow up on what Andy's question there. Is it possible for us to actually look at, take their children where they excelled in math, but they may not have excelled in English or reading and see if there's a correlation with actually the change in math to actually help with the reading? And the reason I ask this is actually through my own child, what I've seen is that his reading assessments have actually started to go up this year compared to previous years and he loves math, so I'm not sure if there might be a correlation between the two.
I appreciate your asking. I certainly can, can talk to our language arts coordinators and our math facilitators. They've been working together on helping support teachers in that implementation because of the language base. Some of the language arts coordinators have some strategies that they're imparting to the math, to the classroom teachers on that. So we'll continue to investigate that correlation. Thank you.
Cindy?
I think the math program is a good agenda item for a future board meeting altogether in the sense that I think it's, it was a pretty big, I mean, a major overhaul, right, of our math program, a whole new curriculum, if you will. And in really the support that we're giving students as they transition, because common sense is going to tell me that when you start in first grade, you've got some foundation that prepares you for second grade. Now, all of that is still true, right? There's still certain competencies that would still be required, but I can imagine that it may be a difficult year in particular because of how, where the program, where the kids cut over in their particular grade levels, where they didn't have the foundation from this program, you know, in the years prior. So I'm really interested in how that is going and what we're doing to support kids as they're looking at math with some of this language, tools incorporated and, and more about that. But I think we could probably talk about that for quite a while, but I'd be interested in hearing that because this is our first year with this program.
Gotcha. And I would say that you're striking the right chords when I'm hearing about this math program, because year over, year over, year, as we had kneecap and then smarter balance assessments, the area that needed greatest improvement was inquiry. And what are we working on? What's the focus? What's the biggest challenge in rollout is inquiry, the inquiry part of this math program. So again, it's showing a more rigorous, rigorous product for them to be able to really get the foundation work on, which should pay dividends in the areas where we were looking for the greatest improvement. And I think what that says, you know, to the district is we're not going to turn on a dime, make a rash decision, but it's something that we talked about probably three, four years ago and it's never been forgotten. And it's been, it's been evaluated and measured and what's the right tool to overcome the obstacles. And now we're, we're looking at a program that looks to be able to deliver that. I think the area where you said does need improvement is the parent resources and I think parents, you know, we've heard this from many parents, we've heard it from teachers as well, that, you know, parents, learning the way math is being taught today is a challenge, is a generational gap. And we need to be able to offer the right resources so that it's not as frustrating for parents if they can't do it with their kids at home or, you know, and I think we had, I mean, we had it when I was, my kids were young, when we rolled out the last program that they had a, a math night where we had stations, we went to different stations to learn about different techniques. And, and it was, it was actually quite productive. There's a lot of Q and A involved and it gave us the opportunity to feel like if we didn't have the answers, it's okay, but we knew where to get the answers and when our kids are coming home with it, the reason that they're being taught the way they are. So again, you know, being able to be a true, parents to be a true partner in the process, that was very helpful as a parent to me and that was more years ago than I'd like to admit now, but yeah, probably about seven, seven years ago? Oh gosh. But on that note, I think that, you know, they're not here, parents aren't here to have all the math answers, clearly they're not, but they're definitely here to make sure that their, their child isn't frustrated and that where they can help, there are good resources to do so and, and know how to ask the right questions for their children with their teachers as they're developing those math skills. So whatever we can do to go forward with that, I think that's always going to be a benefit. So are there any other questions on Q1? So Q2 to come. I'm still looking for where September went, but, because it's getting cold out, but on that note, we do look forward to seeing what midterms bring us. And so I will let you segue gracefully if you'd like.
Well, I would invite our, our team, phys ed, health team. And I'm going to let Adam Carragher introduce all these folks. I just will say as they're getting set up, you know, it's, it's a version of, you know, what I just said a few minutes ago, but I'm proud of the work that we do in this district because, because it, it can't be done without teachers and, and they are just always so willing to come and to really step up. And I just also want to state the obvious that when they do that, on the occasions that it requires them to be out of class, it's not as simple as just being out of class. They, they have to prepare for not being there. They have to, to make sure that the students that are back in the classes, schools when they're not there have something meaningful to do. So they do that and then come and do this work and then go back and, you know, have to pick up seamlessly, which they always do. And so I'm very grateful to them for their work and I thank them for being here tonight on Thanksgiving week. And Adam, if you want to introduce the team?
Yeah, very gladly. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's great to be here. Thank you for having us. We always love to be able to report out about the good work that our, our crew has been doing here. So I actually wrote down the names and they're almost sitting in order, which is really cool. We have all the way here on, well, it would be my right, Sean Croto, the PE teacher at MES. We have Rick Grenier, who is the PE teacher at James Mastercoler Upper Elementary School. To my left is Jen Sossier, the PE teacher at Thornton's Ferry Elementary School. One further over is Amy Larkin Perez, who is a PE teacher slash health teacher at Merrimack High School. And then on the far left is Maggie Croto, who is a health teacher at the Merrimack Middle School. So our work as a committee began about three and a half years ago, which is hard to believe, but it has been. We are similar, we are similar to many of the other groups who have come to you and presented to you. Number one, we are a K to 12 group. On our committee, every grade level is represented in every, that pertains to every single student who potentially has a PE class. Number two, we're using Understanding by Design as a guide, which a lot of the other groups have, have used previously. We are tackling a rather large task when you think about a curriculum that was done approximately 20 years ago and it's taking a significant amount of time. One of the things I, I appreciate the comments about how, how wonderful it is that, you know, of, of, of the teachers to give of their time, but I also can tell you a little secret, the teachers love the opportunity. They love the opportunity to work together, they love the opportunity to talk and discuss their curriculum, their assessments, their practices and, and how everything works together. So thank you, because I know I can say for, for, for them, on behalf of them, but also on behalf of myself, I'm very grateful for the opportunity and the support that we've received from the board as well as district administration. So one of the things, I guess I, I'm trying to provide a little background to this, as an outsider and not having had a lot of experience other than my own physical education experience as a student, you know, I, I, when I first came, I often found myself wondering about many of the things which this group really found quite obvious. During my time with this group of educators, I have found myself consistently thinking differently about the purpose of an activity. You know, why are basketball skills important? Why do we need to know rules of a game? Why are we working on specific foot skills? You know, the answer to all these questions is, is perhaps more simplistic than, than I ever thought. These different activities and games and skills all play a role in our ability and our enjoyment of physical activities. Students work on skills, skills help them perform better in different games and when you perform better, you enjoy it more. Kind of a logical train of thought. Each skill ultimately has its place in a student's potential of enjoying, and this is the most important part, a lifetime of healthy physical activity, because that is the overarching goal of what our program is about in Merrimack School District. As we all know, those who are physically active tend to have better quality of life, but also they get more enjoyment out of these activities. We all know the people who go out and go running for crazy amounts of time and although I am not one of them, you see, you see the enjoyment and the pleasure that they get from that. We also know that this type of exercise, this type of activity also can help to create a more productive person when it comes to their careers of choice. So this is why we do this, this is why we're taking the time and getting together. So at this point, I'm going to pass over to Amy Larkin Perez, who is going to walk us through our PowerPoint presentation that we put together for you. And rock and roll. Amy, you want to come up here?
Oh, there we go. I can stay here. But we are experiencing technical difficulties. Well, while they're trying to figure out that, I just wanted to speak on behalf of, you know, it's almost Thanksgiving and I do want to express our gratitude for the time we've been afforded to work with one another. It really has been a priceless, priceless experience and very valuable for us to collaborate with one another, to streamline our curriculum and just grow professionally with one another and just, just to make sure we're on the same page philosophically, philosophically with everything too. Okay, so we developed a little PowerPoint presentation. So the first slide just speaks to our, our mission statement ultimately. So the goal of phys ed is to develop a physically literate individual who has the knowledge, skills and competence to enjoy a lifetime of helpful physical activity. So ultimately, we really just want the students to learn to love movement, appreciate it, value it, so when they graduate from our district, they go on and incorporate it in some shape or form in their life as they continue on, so they can live a healthy, happy life. We adopted the mission statement from Shape America, the 2014. As you'll see later, we haven't revised our curriculum since, I think it was 1990 was the last time we revised it, so it's been quite a while, though our curriculum hasn't reflected that technically. We have evolved and have been adapting our curriculum to the SHAPE standards, there are the federal guidelines that are recommended. We have been incorporating that into our curriculum. Now our curriculum is just pretty much going to match what we do. So we've been updated as we've been going along, but now we're just kind of meshing or, you know, blending our curriculum together with what we've been doing. So you may have, you may recall seeing this from the last time we presented, but this is just a little map of what we do throughout, well, what a student does throughout their career here at the elementary levels, that's where they build their foundational skills, their knowledge and values, and then when they get to the middle school, it's all about applying those skills, knowledge and values. And when they get to the high school, that's where they have, incorporate lifetime activity skills, knowledge and values, where they learn more about the why, like why are they moving, what's the long-term benefits of it? And then our hope is that they'll continue beyond high school. So this is, these are the national standards that we've adopted. We have that, like this, so this picture on the left are the national, the five national standards. And then in the middle, they're put in elementary language, as you see, and on the right, it's in secondary language. And what's wonderful about this is we'll be able to display this in our, our, our classroom, AKA the gym, where we'll always be able to use it as a reference point to any activity that we're doing during that day or any unit we're starting or at any point for that matter or for anyone to, who's visiting the gym to understand what we're doing and why we're doing it. So that's one of the great things about adopting the SHAPE standards is that it's easy to understand, it's student-friendly and user-friendly. So we, I don't know if you received it, but we did provide, well, hopefully we tried to provide you with a sampling of our scope and sequence and this is just a picture of that and just showing a sample of standard one, which is motor skills and movement patterns. And this is just mostly what the elementary level, it's predominantly evident at the elementary level. No, that's okay. Unless somebody would like to see it, it's, it's up to...
Will you hook it up to the resource?
Okay. Well, if you'd like to see it, maybe we can bring it up after if you're curious. But the, students are either emerging, maturing or applying in the skills. So basically, we have a whole scope and sequence of each standard, breaking down of each skill and standard at each level and it's very detailed. So what's changed since the last time we reviewed our curriculum? So we've included the kindergarten in our curriculum. Obviously, it's not adopted yet by any means, but we are looking to the future, mindful that, that may be changing at some point and we're just, you know, we're just prepared basically. So we're also adopting the SHAPE national standards, using them as a guideline for everything we're doing. We are utilizing the Understanding by Design model, which we thank Dr. McLaughlin for, for educating us and helping us kind of streamline everything that we're doing so there's some uniformity in our curriculum work across the district. It's really, has been helpful. We have a, there's a fluid and progressive K through 12 skill development, so what the students do at the elementary level, year to year is built, the skills are built upon. Once they go to the middle school, hopefully they'll be prepared to do the activities in the middle school. And finally, once they get to the high school, they'll have, practice the skills and then in the high school level, they'll really start learning or thinking about the why behind they're doing everything that they're, they're doing. The next one is, says game classifications and a spiral curriculum. So what that basically means, if you look over to the right, there's a little picture of, so that we have target games, net and wall games, striking and fielding, territorial games and individual pursuits. So previously, when the curriculum was developed in the 90s, it was, the way it was broken down was based on specific activities, whereas now it's based on more skills that are, that the students should be practicing and so we aren't defined to do just one sport or activity. There's a variety of activities that students can do where they're practicing offensive and defensive skills and strategies or working on, you know, jumping or hopping and various gross locomotor skills. So it just allows us to not be so, I don't, I guess narrow-minded, we can provide an opportunity for students to explore a variety of different activities. The second to last one is an integration of wellness and tactical concepts. As far as wellness, we've really, specifically at the high school, I guess if anyone else wants to speak to that, you're more than welcome to, but we've incorporated wellness for years now. We talk about components of fitness, flexibility, muscular fitness, you remember that, Chris? Cardiovascular system and how it connects and relates to all the activities that we're doing and, and also tactical cons- doing, and, and also tactical cons, concepts where we break down the games into smaller, modified games, so students really, it's not like roll the ball out and play anymore, maybe like it was maybe when you were in school, or maybe your parents were in school. We're really trying to incorporate, and again, getting students to understand what they're doing and why they're doing it, and the benefits of it. So, they, we build their confidence, so when they do go out into the real world, they're confident to pursue these activities if they're so interested in them. And lastly, as I've said before, it's user-friendly and student-centered. It's all about trying to, so it's understandable for students and those reading it and participating in it. As far as health education, this is the, I guess, mission statement or definition. We study health to acquire the knowledge, skills, and confidence to make smart, safe, healthy decisions that reduce risk-taking behavior and promotes overall well-being. And as far as curriculum update, we haven't done as much with this work. Really, it's just been the middle school working on scope and sequence for their curriculum or units. Once we complete the PhysEd curriculum, then, as a whole group, we'll work together to move forward with that curriculum. So, where do we go from here? Like I said, we're working to finish up the final touches on the PhysEd curriculum. Our hope is to be done by the end of the year. And as far as help, health, rather, once we finish the PhysEd one, then we'll move forward with the health curriculum. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, yeah. One thing. This is, I can imagine a lot for all of you to try to understand and wrap your head around, but not so for us, because we're right in the middle of it. But not all of us are health teachers. There are really five of us that teach health, am I correct? Two at the middle school, and three at the high school. Those of us at the elementary level are purely physical education, so we've really focused on the PE piece to this point. Now, we're about to shift our focus to the whole health component. Hope that helps kind of clarify things.
Okay, so you led me into the question. If, if there's not a really a focus on health in the elementary, will there be?
Good question, Andy. Well, thanks to the support of Dr. McLaughlin, we've been encouraged to try to create a curriculum that we would ideally like to have in place, so the answer is yes.
This is a strange question or thought. I'll say that right off the bat, but it came up recently, I think with a parent, it would probably be at a soccer field or hockey somewhere, but one thing particularly as it relates to high school, not the prior grades, but high school, I think one of the, a parent that I was talking to was complaining about how, not complaining, but she was talking about how her child does so many sports, like, they're running around all weekend, I think they're playing multiple sports in multiple seasons, and then wondering why they're doing a PE class during the day, too. So, I don't, so the question is, when I look at the mission, if maybe we could go back to that, if you don't mind? Physically literate individuals who have the knowledge, skills, and competence to enjoy a lifetime of healthful physical activity. So, you have this subset of children that have this complete love for everything, physical activity. Are any districts giving, letting kids maybe not take PE in high school, but take another with all the rigor that's out there, or is something like that allowed? Does that make sense? Like...
Well, currently, I'll speak to this. I had a feeling, actually, this may come up, so...
She didn't, I would.
So, there really is no research that we have found that directs, just because a student participates in a sport, for example, means they are, have a lifetime, that they'll be, that they'll be healthy for their, throughout their lifetime. So, one of the major differences between athletics and physical education is, like, and I really tried to stress this as I was going through there, through the PowerPoint, is we explain the why behind everything. Whereas in sports, they're just talking about becoming the best at one specific specialized sport. And we try to understand, get students to understand, like I was saying, the, for example, muscular fitness, and how that plays into an activity that they're doing, and the benefits of muscular fitness, and the best benefits of cardiovascular endurance, and the benefits of flexibility, and how that plays out throughout their lifetime. Whereas in a sport, they're not going to discuss that necessarily, that they're more about winning. So, now, currently, the way we have it at the high school, starting with the class of 2020, they are able to earn PE3 credit for participation in athletics. If they participate in a JV or varsity sport for two or more seasons, they can earn credit, PE3, which is more of an elective, PhysEd credit.
But wasn't that in place before as a PE2? It was, it was there?
It was, yeah, it was there.
Because that was my question, actually.
Yeah, and prior to this, prior to the class of 2020, the students were allowed to get credit for PE2, which is a required, state-required elective, but after collecting the data, students weren't using it. The original intent was for students to open up their schedules to take more academic classes, but after, I'm not going to quote the, the data correctly, but it was like 90% of students weren't, they were still getting early release or late arrival, once they received the credit. So, they still have plenty, they're, the justification for opening up that opportunity wasn't playing out in that fashion.
Yeah, because my question, which I thought was what you were, you were going to ask with her question, was, how does this change in the PE curriculum impact the, the PE2 plan that you had, where it would take that credit away? So, how's that going to affect your, your goals of implementing these lifelong skills? So, I think you really did answer that on, on the second part of it, that it's a PE3 elective. So, because, you know, I know there are two required semesters for the high school, so that answers it for me, actually. I'm sure you can.
If I could just elaborate, because it's an excellent question. And what I would say is that, like, everything we talk about in district, I mean, it's, it's, I feel like I have to have a disclaimer every time, like, sorry, I'm going to say this again, but I say it again because it's important. All the work that, that is happening in Merrimack now is, it's much more complex than it really had ever used to be. And the fact that now at the high school, we have competencies dictates a lot about the value of the work that these folks are, are working on. We didn't used to have competencies. We used to just have, I mean, respectfully, probably years ago, PhysEd was just a thing to take. Now, it is integral to the whole learning experience of a student, because we recognize that the lifelong health and wellness of a student has everything to do with their ability to access other content, and it has a value in and of itself, and as it relates to the being able to access other content. And so, participation in a sport is a fantastic thing, and, not but, and, it doesn't by any stretch necessarily satisfy the competency, which is a complicated, in a good way, requirement that teachers have to, students have to demonstrate mastery of. So, this curriculum reflects a much more sophisticated view of PE and health than we used to have maybe even, you know, 10 or 15 years ago. Just, again, times have changed, and, and this reflects that.
Michael, and then Cindy.
Thank you for coming tonight. I have a couple of things. One, just to actually touch on Cindy's comment in regards to after-school programs. I've actually have read and seen that there's other school districts that actually mandate every student on top of actual PE to actually do an after-school program, have to do a sport at some point, at some point within the year. It's not necessarily that they have to be in a competitive sport. Intramurals, obviously, resource-wise within our district, I'm not sure that we could actually implement that, but just to kind of give a, a different side of view from that. One of the other questions I have is, and Rick, you might be able to touch on this, obviously, knowing the MYA pretty well. Do you guys collaborate at all with the MYA in regards to sharing, you know, knowledge of what the MYA provides to the students and giving them?
Well, I can speak to part of that, Mike. Thank you. The intramural programs that I've been offering at our school, which is the upper elementary, are specifically sports that aren't offered at MYA, like flag football, to just provide them with different opportunities.
Thanks. That's, that's somewhat, just collaboration, just this kind of thing. Then the last thing, you may be looking at this already, but I feel that a lot of student, or a lot of athletes nowadays have actually specialized on, on one sport, and the studies have shown that that's actually not a great thing to do. So, I think that our PE actually allows for, the students obviously partake in other sports, which can help them with the sport that they might be focusing in on, but I'm not sure if there's a way to integrate, or if you're looking at possibly integrating that education to children, so that they know as they grow up that multiple sports is actually better for your body and stuff like that versus a single sport. So, just, just a thought there, too. Thank you.
Cindy?
I was just going to say, I expected very much the answers that I received to my question, what you stated and what Dr. McLaughlin stated, that, you know, I felt that it was because of the competency, but it was something that had come up, and I was curious to see what those responses would be, but they don't lie before I expected.
So, I did have one question. I noticed on your slides, you had things like wheelchair tennis and wheelchair, or not, it's, I think it's wheelchair volleyball, was it? So, when you look at integration with students of different capabilities, how is that being addressed in the curriculum? Because I think that's definitely, you know, as we address the classroom, it is your classroom.
Well, I can speak at the high school level. We, in the past, have offered a unified PE class, but just because of staffing, we just really can't, we can't offer it right now, because we're trying, we're meeting the needs of the, that's a PE3, which is more of an elective class, and we have enough staff to provide classes for just the PE1 and 2s, really.
Okay.
At the elementary level, I'm at Thorntons Ferry. I have my certificate in adaptive PE, and I work to integrate both, like, a Paralympic sport with an Olympic sport. So, coming up with the Winter Olympics this year, I do a biathlon, but the students have to be a Paralympic athlete. And so, they have limited sight or limited mobility, and then it really puts them in the shoes and shows empathy to all athletes. I also teach an adaptive PE class, like a pre-teaching almost, for students to better understand what's going to be coming up in their typical PE class. And then, with the spiral curriculum, as we, like, say, we're doing the net and wall game. Every time we come back and visit it, they learn a different sport. So, to address Mr. Thompson's question about, you know, well, what about the specializing, like, students who specialize in a certain sport? Well, they can realize that their sport has different commonality with other sports. So, if they really specialize in soccer, they know that it's a territorial game, and that it can also go into basketball, it can go into lacrosse, it could go into handball. And so, by having the spiral curriculum, they can really build upon their specialized skill and know that it does relate to other sports as well.
Excellent, thank you. Are there any other questions from the board? Thank you for all the hard work, where to come with, with the health part, so wishing you all the luck.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
Have a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you, happy holiday.
The Wellness Committee has a don't ask, don't tell policy on this week, right? Thank you. There will be pie. Wonderful. There you go. There you go.
Hey, if, I think in, on the news today, they said in Franconia, there's a turkey wobble with a 3.14 pi-k race.
Oh, my goodness. So, on to, item number eight, and Adam, you get to stay, and I, I thought it was John, but you get to stay for all the fun tonight. And so, that's the request to conduct national youth tobacco survey at Merrimack Middle School, 1 7th grade and 1 8th grade class, and I will turn it over to you, Mark, and Adam can support.
Yeah, well, I'm going to very quickly turn it over to Adam. I think you see in your packet that the superintendent received a letter from the Department of Health and Human Services that expressed that they had selected Merrimack Middle School to conduct this survey, and so, Mr. Carragher is here to talk a little bit about that and how he's planning to implement.
So, you know, Merrimack Middle School has been selected, as, as we've already got over, by the Centers of Disease Control to participate in this, the 2018 National Youth Tobacco Survey. You know, the survey's been around for quite a while, since 1999. Been years and years of information and data. One of the things that is interesting to me is the fact that this now will include information related to e-cigarettes, who gets in some of those new, new, I guess, I, I call it a new trend, but I don't know if it's necessarily a new trend, related to tobacco consumption. And, and of course, very importantly, the perception of students related to that. So, ultimately, you know, what that means for Merrimack Middle School students, you know, is basically, you know, 25 7th grade students, 25 8th grade students would have the opportunity to participate in the survey. We would disseminate, of course, parental permission, particularly to opt out of the survey, as, as, as an opportunity for them to say, you know, this isn't something that we would like to participate in. It is a paper and pencil assessment, so it's not something that ultimately is going to be electronic, or for that matter, you know, I guess I would, I would say, an important component, too, is, is it's not something that's really trackable. The idea is that our 25 7th graders are ultimately combined with the entirety of the nation related to the 7th grade responses. There are a few questions on the survey that particularly pertain to, you know, male, female students, but overall, the questions are really just about perceptions and about what they've experienced during their time related to tobacco. Overall, amount of time, you know, ultimately, was one of the questions that I thought was very important to answer. You know, it's about a 45-minute assessment, between, you know, 10 minutes of instruction and 35 minutes roughly to accomplish it. You know, you know, ultimately, I guess I look at this, and I see this as being a really unique and exciting opportunity for, for our middle, middle, middle school students. You know, they're always, they always like to think and, and are important and have a voice, and this is really kind of a neat opportunity for them to really feel and actually sit down and do something, and if it's not them that's actually being, being, having the opportunity to take this survey, then it would be other students who are having the opportunity to take this survey. And then, when they look at the results, perhaps something that, that really can help them understand and maybe hit a little bit closer to home for our students. So, although I don't pretend to know all the answers about this survey, because I'm still learning a lot about it myself, I would be happy to field any questions or, you know, look into any concerns that you might have.
Okay. So, far, I think I saw Andy then Cindy.
So, just to be clear, this, I'm, I'm looking at the permission form, and we have a lot of things about opting in and opting out. So, by, by, you need to get parents' permission before they can participate in the survey. Is that correct?
The, the idea would be that students would participate in the survey unless parents opted out of taking the survey.
So, we need to make that very clear to parents?
Yes.
Because this is a, because the permission form, it's, it's kind of weird the way it's written, because you put the child's name, says I've read the form and know what the survey's about, they sign it, and then there's a box saying, no, they may not. So, it appears as though they can't do anything whether, whether they, they turn this in, and, and it dictates yes or no. That's the way it appears. So, my, my guidance is, if it is truly opt-out, by default, they're going to be part unless, you've got to make that very clear. you've got to make that very clear.
Okay, Michael?
So I just want, I guess I would like legal clarification on this, because I believe that SB 43 that was actually signed into law on September 16th of 2017 stated that non-academic surveys needed to have an opt-in policy. And that was a change as of September of this year that was signed by the governor.
So I certainly can, we certainly can consult legal counsel on that.
So that would be number 251, semicolon, 1.
We'll do that.
So Cindy?
Yeah, I believe that to be true as well, at least based on what I've heard over recent legislation. I know we had talked about even at the Communications Committee, are there ways to manage that opt-in and whatnot? So, yeah, if we can get an answer to that, that would be great. But just for clarification, another point of clarification would be that for the purpose of this survey, it would be one classroom, like a, would it be like a homeroom classroom? It's saying one class, so I don't know what that means exactly.
So while I'm not 100% certain, my understanding of it is, is there's a group of about 25 students. And it would be an actual class that would be selected randomly. It wouldn't be necessarily a list of our student population, and then they randomly select within that.
It could be one period, one class, whatever.
Right. It would literally be one class. And to be honest with you, my thought in processing through this was that there's just such strong ties to what our health curriculum covers throughout the course of their time there, that to provide the kids with a, with a survey experience and then potentially being able to look at that information in a survey that they or their peers participated in would be just, you know, real, unique educational experience.
And then it would be administered by someone provided through the Department of Health and Human Services, is that?
Correct. And we would, of course, assist.
Correct. Okay. Thank you.
Michael?
Even though I brought up the state law that I believe is overriding this, if it was done properly through the channels, I would actually be in agreement with doing this for the community or for the class.
Naomi, and then Andy.
Is there any way that you know of to contact whoever the CDC is managing this part and find out if they do have an opt-in version of this form, just in case we need it? I see that they included this, but I don't know, perhaps they have, they must have come across this in other states before.
I believe, I believe that they do have one. And so we'll investigate that and then seek legal counsel about which one is the appropriate one to use.
Andy?
And just following on to that, so let's assume that we turn it into an opt-in, and you wanted to do a classroom, and only five kids in the classroom opt-in to take it. Is there any sort of number that you're looking to do? I mean, is the number like a 25? And if you don't get anywhere near that in a classroom, do you just broaden your search? I know you probably don't have the answers to all these, but it just sort of is a sort of a snowball effect when you start thinking about opt-in, opt-out, and things like that.
Yeah, and it's definitely something we'll have to, you know, take under advisement and really think through. Don't have an answer now, unfortunately, yeah.
Food for thought, though.
Talking to Adam the other day, I mean, you yourself had a number of these questions. And I think that with the holiday being what it is, but I think your plan was probably to be in touch with the CDC yourself with your questions so that you could get your own clarification. So I, some of these questions Adam even raised on his own. So we'll definitely get these so that we're clear about what we're doing.
So actually, a question for you, Dr. McLaughlin. Does our, was this truly random, or is our involvement in, like, Safeguard any way impacting whether the fact that we're being brought? Because this felt very natural, the kind of other surveys that we've done in the past. So I'm just curious if there's any correlation, or was this just a by chance thing?
Yeah, no, it's a good question. I really have no reason to believe it's anything other than random. So if it is something other than random because of work that we've done in any number of things, then I wouldn't know it. It does seem like it was just, you know, plucking Merrimack Middle School out of, out of the hat. I don't think you have any other reason to suspect it's anything other than that either.
In my nine years, this is the first time I believe we've been selected for the survey.
Yeah.
But could be. I just wouldn't know it.
Okay, Cindy?
Does anyone else have any other commentary, otherwise I'll make a motion?
Actually, we're not, if you don't mind.
Oh, okay.
And the reason I'm saying that is because I think that we want to know what we're approving first. So my comment was that the collection will occur between February and May 2018. So we're actually in no rush to make a decision. Even if you wanted to put this, we could put it on consent in a future meeting, or we could actually put it as a regular agenda item, get the legal renderings on how it will be administered, what the, what the approval process is, and we have plenty of time. So if we feel, unlike the other that had a tight deadline of January, we're actually in no rush to make a decision. And we may just want, you know, vet it a little more, in my personal opinion, before we, you know, and maybe just have as a next agenda, and just get those quick questions answered.
The motion I was gonna make was going to be opt-in or opt-out, depending on what, we were guided by legal counsel. But I'm perfectly fine if we put it on a consent agenda for a future meeting, and then if someone wants to pull it from consent, we could.
Sounds, well, to that, I think we may want to just put it as an agenda item, because we can't really deliberate on the consent. So if we just make an agenda item, get the quick questions answered, and then we can make a motion.
Yeah, that's fine.
So I'm sure it won't take a lot of research to get that done, so. Should be a quickie. And on that, it sounds like a great idea. Obviously, it's in line with the mission we have as a district. And we hope that it goes very smoothly, so, and that we can, we can get this done in quick fashion for you. So next meeting, it's probably gonna be quick and easy, but we appreciate the insights on this. It's really good stuff.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ed. Happy Thanksgiving.
You as well.
And now on to item number nine, which is the outcome from October water testing for the six schools. And I'll turn it over to Matt.
Thank you. Last July of 2017. I think the tests were actually done in July, but the results were known, I mean, in May, but the results were known in July. We had all six schools tested, and the test results ranged from a high of 17 parts per trillion to a low of 15. Just recently, in October, we've had the six schools tested again. And I can read you the individual results. Reed's Ferry Elementary School was at 17 parts per trillion. Merrimack High School was at 20 parts per trillion. Master Cola Elementary School was at 18 parts per trillion. Merrimack Middle School was at 19 parts per trillion. And Thornton's Ferry was at 15 parts per trillion. I left out the upper elementary school because we were in the process of doing a retest on that. They were showing up, from the testing labs from Nelson Analytics in Manchester, as a zero reading, and I didn't quite believe that. So we sent the initially tested sample back and a new sample that was just taken back to the lab to have it tested again. I would probably expect the same results as the other schools. So that is my update.
Thank you, Matt. Andy already uses his hand up. Go for it.
So out of curiosity, those numbers are all PFOA numbers?
That's correct.
So I noticed also that they have PFOS next to all of them. But it lists less than four. Now, is that meaning it could be 3.9, or does that mean that, what does that mean? Because it doesn't give you a real number. It's, it's like it's less than some threshold that they were testing for?
Probably less than a threshold.
Because I know that, I know that the MVD, when they test, they typically get a non-detect on the PFOS.
Well, the report limit was four, and the result was less than four. So it didn't say anything over four or above, they would report it. Anything under four, they wouldn't. So I don't know what the exact number is, but it was less than four.
I just, my only question is, I know that it will, people, because the threshold of 70 parts per trillion is a combination of PFOAs and PFOSs. I know these numbers are, the PFOA numbers are similar to what we tested. But I think last time we got actual non-detect readings on the PFOSs, and this time, the number looks a little, you can't draw that conclusion.
Yeah, the...
Hey, Matt, can I, do you mind if I interject?
Yeah, sure.
So what you'll find sometimes on the testing is that actually the report limit, if it falls below it, people will put that as non-detect. So that's the difference between some labs actually testing, that if four is the limit and it's below it, they'll consider it.
Right, that's what I mean. You can't, it was a different conclusion with the last time from this time, so.
So, so it's almost like if you fall below these numbers, it's considered a non-detect on some other tests.
Yeah, and the, I'm looking at the report from May-July, and they have, for the same thing, they have a less than four reading, so.
Okay. Michael, did you have a question since you interjected, or is it just an interjection?
No, just an interjection, thank you.
I guess it's Cindy.
So when are we slated to do these again? We're not?
We're not.
I think, you know, we pretty much, well, go ahead.
I think what we're gonna do at this point is if the board feels another test is necessary, we were looking at things such as droughts, coming out of droughts. Times of year schools were being, were in use. So if, like, I think there's a request to do every three months, but then it could be testing in the middle of the summer when the, when the water's minimally used. So it really is not what you would call a peak time to test. So on that, as we, as needed, we can, we can move to do that. But as we're going into budget season, knowing that we have some data to track, it might give us, you know, I think we have some data points for, you know, future considerations on what we want to do. So it's up to us. We direct Matt as a board as we see fit.
And that was gonna be my second piece. If we could see the data points that we've had put together in a graph so we can see how it's, they've stayed stable by school or, or up and down.
I think we have at least three, three data points, don't we?
Right, yeah. I'd like to see them all together by school. That would be helpful for me.
So that's something we could do. They're all around the same as what you're looking at now. One of the tests, we tested for a myriad of things in there, like arsenic and, you know, a lot of other chemicals. But I'll just pick out the PFOAs and put together a chart, you know.
And I would put the others as backup, because I think when we're looking at the potential of a filtration system, that would also help with other contaminants. So I would say maybe we don't need the type of graph, but to have it all together in one piece as far as what we, what we found in our water.
Yeah, there was only one time where we tested for more than just PFOAs, I believe.
Yeah, I believe that's to be true as well.
And that's something that, when you get, when you get the, I'll do a little foreshadowing here. When you get the proposed operating budget, you'll have a couple of options. I think the first option that we'll probably put in the budget would be the activated charcoal for the PFOAs. And then we are getting a price for the reverse osmosis system also that takes it all out, regardless the chemicals you know about and the chemicals that you don't know are gonna be an issue. So you'll be seeing probably both of those, but only one of them will be incorporated in the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I was provided some information, and some other people might have seen this, as it was also posted out on the web, that the number of 70 parts per trillion was based off of a study of an adult. And the New Jersey level of...
20, is it?
I thought it's actually below 20. I think New Jersey's actually like 10 or 12, which I'll have to confirm, was actually done on a study of children. So I think it would be good of us to actually look at that and actually find out if that is true. I'm not gonna say it's true here, because obviously, it's just...
It's on the air, and that has to be true.
No. But it would be a good point of information if actually it was based off of consumption by adolescents, because then it would obviously play well into our discussion here. So I'm not, I'll try to look if anybody else can also assist. I'd greatly appreciate it, but I'll try to get that information and share it if I can find it.
Okay. If I have one piece of feedback, is that with all those reports that we did have, if we could just have a little spot on our website, that just is a data repository where we can reference, that people can reference, you know, when we've studied, what we've gotten for readings. Because especially when you talk about Reed's, well, parents, when we first started looking at Reed's, have now gotten to Master Cola Upper Elementary, and they don't necessarily see, you know, they may expect that may be different, because it's in the middle of town versus the northern town.
Conceptually, if all the wells are located in different parts of town, and they all go back to a central distribution center, and then they're all pumped out to all the schools, it doesn't matter about Reed's versus MES versus Thornton's. They should all be consistently the same. However, as it's been explained to me, that sometimes if there's a big demand draw, whoever the school is closest to the well that's receiving the water will get the water from that particular well. Unless I understood Ron Minor, misunderstood Ron Minor and the MVD. So sometimes, you know, this is, this can be the changes in how the mixing is done at the main plant.
Right, and I think that came up at our joint meeting. So if you were to do a central, a central filtration system, where would it be? And they're like, we wouldn't know where to put it, was the answer I think we got. So how do you design it when you don't know where it would all come? So I think that's still the case. So on that note, yeah, I think that, you know, having that data for, for parents, you know, that they're moving school to school, school to different parts of the, of the district, they can kind of see where the numbers are for their kids as they're going through a school system. So I think it's a beneficial piece of information for all our parents. Cindy?
And I would say one thing to add to that document, too, could be the soil testing that we did. We did that one snapshot, I think.
Yeah, we did do soil testing.
It reads only, correct?
Yeah, it reads, because it was the concern, obviously, there was concern there because of its proximity to St. Cobain and the, the stuff coming out of the stack could be wafting over to Reed's Ferry School. And that, that turned out fairly favorable. But I'll put that information, it was on the, because I remember there was a, I'm looking at it now. There was like a little water drop on the website somewhere in the margin that had something with water in it. So we'll put that back up, and we'll add this information to it and just stick it all in one place.
I would say get it, look in a summary format, that it's really easy to read and understand. And then if we have the backup somewhere else, that's fine, but somewhere where someone can get like a one-two.
Little spreadsheet, and here you go, kind of thing. Okay, you got it.
Are there any other questions or comments on the water reports? Seeing none, we're on to the housekeeping part of the show. So item number 10 is the approval of the November 6th, 2017 mitts. Moved by Cindy, seconded by Andy. Are there any adjustments to the mitts? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries 500. Item number 11, other, is there any correspondence to come before the board? Not even an exchange of recipes, so we are good there. Any comments from the board? Cindy?
And I just wanted to comment how much I appreciate the curriculum review. For those of us that have been on the board for a while, it used to be a board assignment where we would go out and then report back on the curriculum. I really like having the presentation like this so that the public can see the good work that our district is doing and can also give them an opportunity to ask questions, too, if they need to reach out to, to any of us.
And I had one comment. I know that we're always hearing about declining enrollments. Well, every month, we get a snapshot of the enrollments, the first, I think it's the first Tuesday or second Tuesday of the month, or something like that. So it's first Tuesday a month. And so we've actually gained 40 kids since the first day of school. So interestingly, now, for declining enrollments, we added 40 kids to the buildings. So I just thought that'd be of interest to the general pop. So that was my comment. So seeing the other comments, is there any new business to come before the board? Seeing none, are there any committee reports from the board? Cindy, then Michael.
I just had a couple of PERC meetings that I wanted to report on. One was a meeting in October and another one in November. Some of the classes that were up for review right now at the high school. One was a film literacy and creative writing, where basically students would write about movies that they've seen and be able to paraphrase. And that would be the first one. Another one was a philosophy class at a running start level. Another one is an introduction to business. And then experimental photography in concert with... And then experimental photography in concert with chemistry. So students would actually take pictures as they support research around science, which seemed incredibly interesting. And then the last one that is under review is an AP literature and comparative politics. So basically, you would marry some key literary works with the political climate of that particular timeframe, which also was really interesting. So it's neat to see some of the work and some fresh and creative ideas coming out of a couple of the folks that presented were first-year hires to the district, so that is really encouraging. If you'd like more information, reach out. I have a little more detail if you want to know about any of these. Marcus, or anything you'd like to add on that?
No, I think it's an excellent summary. There are some interesting things happening.
Thank you.
Michael?
I had the Perks and Rec Committee meeting last week. They were grateful for the approval to review the Timmins property and do the survey. In addition, based off the meeting with the town council and the school board, we are going to add a small summary to the report regarding fields, basically just a quick synopsis from the high school, the MIA, and add that to the front of the report from 2010. And we're going to bring together the subcommittee and continue to review properties. The property at the YMCA was discussed. We also discussed the property that is actually behind Campers Inn along the highway to possibly look at, this is the Parks and Rec, the town, not us. If you actually go by the highway, there's this big rock place that has been flattened. It's for sale, and it would fit, it's flat. So it would actually possibly be a good location. So we're looking at that property to see if that's also feasible, so. So they said, thank you.
Are there any other committee reports? I have one. I was at the Board Bean for the New Hampshire School Boards Association last week, and we did get a presentation from the New Hampshire Retirement System, and he opened up the door to have local presentations at local school boards. So I let Marge be aware, because they also presented to the NHSAA, which is the Administrators Association recently, and I think that it will be something that'd be very valuable to this board, so we know things like what, what we have for money, what we have for funds that aren't there for future need, those kind of things, and what the long-term health is of the retirement system and how it's, how it's going. Just to let you know, I will be in San Antonio, Texas, April 6th to 9th, as New Hampshire delegate for the National School Boards Association. So I will report back on all I learned from the, from the national level, as I do for the state level, and see, see what the trends are on, for our peers in other states. So if there are no other committee reports, we will go on to item number 14, which is public comments on agenda items. And seeing the one public does not want to comment, but she did already, so thank you again, Carol. We'll take a moment to sign the manifest, and I will entertain the motion to go into non-public per RSA 91-a, colon, 3, Roman numeral, two sections A, B, and C, made by Michael, seconded by Andy. Naomi, how do you vote?
In favor.
Michael?
In favor.
Cindy?
In favor.
Andy?
In favor.
And I vote in favor. The motion carries 5-0-0. Thank you and good night.